This is charging.
Roger.
Yours is charging now.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the March 7th Selectmen's Board at 6:38. Please rise and sit in the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold on. Hold on. Put it back where it was. I don't know anything about.
Yeah, I think they just, yeah, she took yours apart, too.
I'm trying to make it immediate, bring it home and bring it back to the next meeting. I believe Selectmen's Board has a motion tonight.
All right, I move that the board just came out of a non-public session, RSA 91-8:3, Section 2A-C, and that we will keep all matters discussed confidential until, in the opinion of the majority of the board, the circumstances no longer apply, except to make a couple of announcements.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
That unanimous, in which case I will make the announcements from non-public. By unanimous vote of the board this evening, the board voted to take Jason Fadetti.
Fadett.
Fadett, okay.
Fadetti.
Off probation. He has completed his firefighter one course. He is being moved from grade 10, Step 1, to grade 11, Step 10, effective the 5th of February 2017. The board voted to take Sean King off probation. He has completed his firefighter one and firefighter two, and EMT Basak. He is moved, the board voted to move him from grade 10, Step 2, to grade 13, Step 9, effective 5th of February 2017, by unanimous vote.
That's March, March 5th, not February. This past Sunday. On both of them.
It is right, it's March, not February.
Okay.
3/5, yeah.
And the board voted to grant an upwardly exemption. Moving right along to Selectmen's Public and Nonpublic News dated February 21st, 2017. Enough time to get my February plan.
Relation to the Selectmen's Public Meeting Minutes dated February 21st, 2017. Edward?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
That unanimous. Moving along to item one, review of fire department fee schedule.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing the fire department to come in front of you this evening. What the fire department is asking is, I believe it was sometime last year, we met with the board to increase the fire department permit fees slightly, effective January 1st of this year. I do not believe the board officially made the motion to accept it. We started January 1st of this year with a new fee schedule. So the board has to officially vote to adopt the new fees. And all the funds go back into the general fund. It does not go into the fire department's budget.
First one I have is, the first line says residential smoke.
Smoke detectors.
Okay, it needs to say smoke detectors.
That's fine.
That's fire department terminology.
One question I have, if you're there to inspect the smoke detector and have an oxide detector at the same time, you charge?
Only one fee.
Okay. Is that stipulated someplace because it?
It goes on the permit. When the contractor comes into the fire station and pulls their permit, they'll put smoke, COs.
Okay.
It's only one fee.
All right.
Yeah, larger whichever fee, correct?
They're both, yes. But they're both the same fee for residential. Commercial is where it changes, depending on the square footage of the building, depending on the occupancy, that's where the fees change.
Does this bring us up with all the other towns?
I believe it's lower than the other towns.
But we've been that far behind for that long.
That I honestly couldn't tell you. We were just taking care of what used to be and did the increase because the call volume for inspections has increased. That was the reason why every year we check it, and if it needs to be changed, we change it. If it doesn't, it stays.
Okay.
All right, I move to accept the new current fee schedule as written, effective March 7th, 2017.
Can't wait for us.
Second.
Yep, I'll have a second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
That unanimous.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The grand amount revised from $13,533.45 to $15,834.00.
So you got us an extra two grand, Larry?
No, what it was is, it was $13,000 and some change, but when we do the soft match, which is when we all go for our training, they actually add that on to the total tab. So before, I'm just going to use rough numbers, it was $6,500 apiece for the town, $6,500 for the feds. Now that we add our soft match, the feds are actually going to give us back $79.15? $79.15, so we're actually getting more money out of them. It's still going to break down to $300, $400 per AED. It's just that we, this is the first grant we ever did where we had to add the soft match to the total grant package because it's all equipment. Like the plans that we do, we do a soft match, but they don't add that because it's not equipment, it's just planning.
Chief would like to speak on it, if you don't mind.
I think, oh, did you read this over?
No, I'll, he'll do it.
Just want to say, on behalf of the members of the fire department, I want to thank the board of selectmen for looking into the grant. Want to thank Mr. Foote for his hard work in getting this grant. I did go to the Fire Academy with Mr. Foote when we met with the director. Proud to have this board of selectmen, what I like to say, and so do the members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to, someone to make a motion to say, the town of Newton Board of Selectmen in the majority vote accepted the terms of the emergency management performance grant as presented in the amount of $7,917 for the purchase of automated external regulators and an AED trainer unit. Furthermore, the board acknowledges that the total cost of this project will be $15,834, in which the town will be responsible for 50 percent match, which is $7,917.
So moved.
And to authorize the, do you want to authorize the town manager or the chair to sign?
We don't have a town manager, just it'll be the chair.
And to authorize the chair to sign the grant.
Okay.
So if the town doesn't pay, you're responsible.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
That unanimous. Okay, I see finalized grounds of maintenance for the town building in Green Park. We have, the final, well, plus I have tablets. At the last meeting, we basically agreed on a, organization to do our grounds of maintenance. We have a request for this.
There is online.
We have the request of this contract, and you have the responsibility for that. To which do we have a motion?
So it's going to Granite Coast?
Uh, Granite Coast for Greenie Park, for the Gail Library.
So Greenie and Gail.
PD.
And Marshall.
PD, Town Hall.
The town hall, the P D.
I'll make a motion to accept the contract with Granite Coast Landscapes, the landscape work to be held at the Town Hall, the Marshall House, the PD, Gail Library, and Greenie Park for one year.
For one year.
What I have to say to your mouth?
And authorize the chair to sign.
And authorize the chair to sign the contract. Second?
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Just as a reminder, this is the quote that we're most interested in at our last meeting. We just asked for a one-year contract as opposed to a two-year, so that's why we're not discussing it quite as much as we did the last time.
Are we doing A or B here? With the fall cleanup or without the cleanup? Because there's two different prices.
What was the question?
At the end of the contract.
Two numbers, one with including fall cleanup and one without.
Okay, which, which one are you looking at? Which?
It's at the bottom of the contract.
But there's, there's a contract for each, yeah, which contract?
There's a contract.
They're all labeled.
Right.
The Greenie Park includes that, does the Greenie Park include the annual cost with or without?
That's what, I believe that one is without the cleanup.
This is a Granite Coast Landscape Management Contract.
Yeah, so Greenwich shows, one-year doc on, I don't know which page number it is, but just before the terms and conditions, gives us a total annual cost with spring and fall cleanups of $20,831.48.
Yep.
And a total annual cost excluding cleanups.
$17,000.
Right.
So which one are we doing?
I believe we should be going with the cleanups, which is the service we have had in the past.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Okay, so you're going to go with the, with the cleanup.
That'd be a total of $20,831.48 for Greenie Park.
For the whole, that's for all of them, right?
No, that's just for Greenie Park.
Greenie.
Greenie Park is $12,388, Gail Library, and?
Oh, okay.
$17,000.
Lost it.
The Marshall House is $26,000?
Police Department is $46,000. $46,000.
Yeah, and Town Hall is?
Okay, yeah.
So that, that is all the, the motion.
So the total, do we have a total?
Okay.
Do we have a total?
No, I didn't total those up.
Okay.
Because it's going to be more than what we had originally estimated because you went with the cleanup for Greenie Park. So do they can?
Very good. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
That unanimous.
Cool.
Okay, I will note this after I've left the boardroom at this point, if I appeal the line as the Court of Appeals Secretary at grade nine, step 10.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No, I have a question. What is the hours?
This is, I believe, two hours per week.
Depends, it could be 15 minutes, it could be two hours.
She gets paid a minimum of two hours, though.
She gets paid.
Right, I just want people to know that it's not a full-time or a part-time.
Right. Once, once a month.
Maybe a couple hours a month, perhaps.
They need, once a month, minimum two hours per month.
All right, we're out.
If there's a meeting.
Right, I just don't want people thinking that they're paying a full-time staff.
Right, right.
If there's a full-time meeting, she won't even get two hours.
Right.
However, this must probably be kind of this position because it's only a couple of hours.
Right.
You have nobody.
Plus, by hiring her for this particular position, it still keeps her in the same employee category that she currently holds. She is not moving from one category to another.
Right. Okay, so do I have a motion?
You already made the motion before this is just announced.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What are you, what are you, are you?
The hiring, approving hiring.
Approve, okay.
We will not be doing any evaluation meetings this evening because?
Right, no, it was more for discussion. We'd like the board to maybe set a date when we can kind of go through them because this is starting to accumulate, but I know we'll obviously wait until after the elections.
I was just going to tell you the answer.
Just, just food for thought, that's all.
Okay, the next item is to review inside the contract for the new town server laptop. As you see, there's an HP Financial quote, the HP contract, town server laptop.
So basically, Kim and I went through and we discussed this, we suggest that you, we purchase a new, not purchase, but lease, a new town server because that one's, the warranty's expired, and that we purchase or lease a laptop for Nancy. Again, that would be a lease. You have, if you look at the first link there, the HP Financial one, the quote.
It was, mine doesn't look either.
Okay. That gives you the fair market value of what they quoted us.
I don't know if you have a quote.
Okay, if you wanted to do a monthly, it's actually, a monthly payment is $781.30, not $0.54, okay? And the quarterly is more expensive than the monthly, and that's just because of the different rates that applies. So the percentage that, you know, the interest that you pay monthly is different than the interest you pay quarterly than you pay yearly. They change them. So the, the payment for the quarterly is $2,3551.85, and if you wanted to pay it annually, it would be $9,178.84. And note something there is that on the annual, you would have to pay in advance. So we were recommending.
But higher.
No, the annual would be less, but you have to pay upfront. The other ones you pay like after the month.
What's the difference if we pay upfront?
Well, the difference, the payment totals is $27,536.52 if you paid it in three, so you pay three payments of $9,178.84. If you go with the 36-month one, the difference is $28,000, probably a little less than $135.
Okay.
The most expensive right now is the quarterly.
So what is the fourth one?
So you want to go with the annual one, right?
Makes sense to me, and you don't have to do those monthly payments every month.
Right.
If we have the money there, why?
Yeah.
Why not pay us if I pay it off?
Exactly, exactly.
Right, plus it, I mean, it's decreasing what we're paying out in interest.
Right.
Which is saving the town money, and that's what I'm all about, we're saving us money.
Right.
So you need?
So I'm for the annual payments.
And this is Amon, right?
No, this is HP Financial.
Okay.
So the leasing company, what happens is you sign an agreement with the leasing company. The leasing company then places the order and ships the parts or the, the equipment to Amon, who will then come and install it.
Okay.
Now, in the contract, it says that there's, that they require automatic withdrawal, but we don't need to do that.
We don't want to do that.
And they, we don't have to worry about that. He says just don't fill it out.
And since we're doing the annual advance payment, they don't need it.
Right.
So we won't be doing that.
And this is for one year?
Correct.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll make a motion.
It's $9,000 per year.
I would suggest if, when you make your motion, is that you have, because as I believe on that, there's like one place to sign, so the chairman would sign.
Authorize, yeah.
Chairman will be responsible for the payments.
So on the, on the agreement that you have right now, there's going to be one page that'll have to be changed, and because you went with the yearly, we'll have to get an update to say that, to do the contract for just yearly payments instead of the monthly. So Jim, you'll have to come back in and John Hancock that.
Okay, you have until next Tuesday.
Thursday night, how's that?
I actually agree on that.
So it's actually a three-year contract?
Correct, it's a three-year contract.
I'll make a motion to accept the fair market value true lease for three years to the amount of $27,536.52 to be paid out annually, $9,178.84 per year.
I'll second.
With the chairman as the authorizing.
Signature.
Signature.
And I second for discussion. I just want to explain to those who are paying attention to the video that it may be a multi-year, but there is an escape clause on this.
Yes.
That allows us to walk away without penalty if we do not get a budget that will cover it for the following year. So it doesn't fall under that, must be a warrant under.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Okay, there's one more thing with that, with Amon, or with the, your tablets, basically. So with your tablets, you, right now you're using Office 365 Personal Edition. Because we're not really a home, we should be using the business license, so you're not in compliance with Microsoft licensing. Amon says that the recommendation is that we move to the business version of Office 365. That'll give you the same things, except a little bit more like sharing if you wanted to set up shared folders and things like that. The difference is, right now you're paying approximately $11 a month per tablet for email and personal office. With the business edition, you'd be paying approximately $15 a month per tablet. Again, you would be in compliance if you do it that way.
So $35 a year more, if you want.
Yeah.
Yep.
So that's why you need to leave your lap, your tablets with me, so we can upgrade them. What'll happen is that licenses expire for email only Saturday?
11th.
The 11th, Saturday, so we're trying to get this done for you quickly.
That's fine.
What's the quote, $75?
$75, yeah.
Yes.
Do you want to make the motion with this lease? It's a $75 setup fee.
It's a one, it's just a one-year expense, all we have to do is pay.
Yeah, if you guys are okay with it, okay.
Okay.
Okay, all right, okay.
Yep. Okay. Perfect.
Well, that's mine, you don't need that, right?
No, you're all set.
Okay.
Okay, moving right along to announcements. Annual report is here.
Yay!
Wonderful picture of the front cover. And? What kind of dedication?
Eight seven.
This year is dedicated to the Hesterbrook Twins, Roland and Russell. I think everybody on the board agrees that that's truly a reason to dedicate a town report. So there are copies here at the Town Hall. If you want copies, come and get them. Okay, last is under other.
Oh, yeah, we have an announcement to give. Nobody forgets. Don't forget next Tuesday, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Are you still, you're stunned at?
No. We will be having a town from school election, make sure everybody comes to vote. Well, you started a new one to advertise.
Free coffee and donuts by Mr. Donovan.
I'd also like to remind people that the Students with a Voice is holding a school candidate's night tomorrow night at the high school. In case you haven't heard, please attend.
You got to get this stuff at the transfer station, it's a video, you're local politicians.
Appearing there weekly. Okay, so first we need a motion to sign a manifest in March 7th, 2017, in the amount of $137,044.52.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item is to sign a payroll manifest with a pay period, 2/19/2017 to 3/4/2017, and the, for the pay date of 3/9/17.
Do we have an amount on that?
No.
So moved.
I don't have a lot.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we've reviewed and looking for a motion to have the chair sign the?
I move to have the chairman of the board sign the 2106 DES Annual Solid Waste Report provided by the transfer station manager.
That's supposed to be 2016.
We, there was one thing I noticed in the.
I'd like to just say it's a 2016, not a 2106.
Okay, that's.
We're just looking into the future.
I just said amendment.
Taiko.
It was fascinating to see that the people of Newton thankfully recycle and?
It's getting better, it could be better. Let's put it that way.
It's amazing that the, we, in Newton, we managed last year to, through recycling, present, I'm not going to put it correctly, approximately 335 tons of materials that normally would have gone into refuse, went to recycle. When you consider the number of houses in town? Divide that up, each, for each household in town is putting up a good 250 to 300 pounds worth of recycling, not going into the trash, but going, and some of that actually brings us the funds that we are using this year to have a hazardous waste program.
Right.
Congratulations to Newton, you're actually doing something very, very good. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Since Selectmen's haven't been, well, since you made my announcement already, is there anything further to come before this board?
God, you're still stunned at?
I was going to say, it's been a pleasure being your chair for the past 18 months, and thank you for this board. And with that?
Thank you for the leadership, Jim.
Yes.
Yes, Jim, thank you.
With that, we will adjourn.
See you all next Tuesday.
Yes.
So I move to Germany. So, uh, I move to adjourn me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven oh six PM.
Thank you.